Good evening, we will call the order of our May 15, 2025 regular board supervisor meeting. Reverend Gary Barker for the invocation. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Let us pray. Blessed God, give you thanks for all the ways you blessed us in this community, for the beauty of nature on the Chesapeake, for our neighbors, friends, and family, for the people who grew up here and the people who have come from near and far. Bless the board this night in their deliberations, discussions, and decisions that we might honor ye. We give thanks for all the work in this county, we give thanks for the safety provided by police, for the wisdom offered by our teachers, and for the care given by those in fire and rescue. We ask your blessing on them all, keep them safe. Bless all who speak this night, may their words be so true, your truth, and they re-grow in living more and more in the love you give us through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen, Reverend. Thank you, sir. Strongest stands with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which is standing one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Green?
Mr. Bowen?
Here.
Mr. Walls?
Here.
Ms. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Jones? Mr. Doss?
Here.
Board members, can I get a motion to approve the agenda? Motion to approve the agenda, Mr. Chair. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We can get a vote. Next, we have a special presentation from V A two fifty. Anyone here from V A two fifty?
I just got notified that Mr. Wilson, he will not be here.
Okay, all right, thank you. So next will be opportunity for citizens to comment. Ms. Wilson, would you read the guidelines?
For the public comment period, each speaker is allowed three minutes to speak as an individual and five minutes to speak on behalf of a group such as a club, association, nonprofit organization, and the like, or unless prior arrangements have been made for the individual to be allotted five minutes. All remarks should be addressed to the board as a whole. Speakers shall refrain from comments or behaviors that involve disorderly speech or action, name-calling or personal attacks, obscene or indecent remarks, and derogatory comments on personalities. Please state your name and address for the record and declare any group you are representing. If you would like to comment on a public hearing presented on the agenda, please hold your comments until the public hearing is opened. Comments must be addressed to the services or policies of the county. Persons speaking before the board or leaving comments on the board's digital meeting portal will not be allowed to campaign for public office, use profanity or vulgar language, or address pending litigation.
Anyone who would like to speak, please come forward. Anyone here, Mr. Hicks?
Yes. Richard Hicks, North Virginia. First, let me thank Mr. Jones for voting against an unneeded tax increase for a school system that has two hundred employees for less than seven hundred and fifty students. That's a ratio of less than one to four. And the school system is still maintaining classroom space for over thirteen hundred students when the school enrollment is less than seven fifty and declining. And we see and have heard of no plans to do anything like that. And something should have been done two years ago. New subject. The new buzzword in Matthews County is affordable housing. I note that there are presently fifteen houses for sale in Matthews under three hundred thousand dollars. That's certainly affordable. Well, we've had this discussion before, unless you spend your money on tattoos, beer, fancy cars, cigarettes, fast food, and a lot of other nonsense. Also, I want to note, other words are, well, wait a minute. New word, buzzword for Matthews is affordable housing. We also have some other words. There are things like zoning changes to allow increased housing density, tiny homes, and workforce housing. Think about this, add this all together. Affordable housing, tiny homes, workforce housing, increased zoning density equals mobile home park. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks. Anyone else? I think we will close citizen comment. Next on the agenda is our public hearing hearings. Ms. Wilson, could you please provide a background on the first public hearing?
The first public hearing is on a secondary six-year plan for fiscal years 2026 through 2031 in Matthews County, and we have Lee McKnight here with V Doc to present this.
Good evening, sir. Good evening, members of the board.
All right. My name is Lee McKnight of the Virginia Department of Transportation. I am the residency administrator for all the residency. The code of Virginia requires that county board supervisors, in conjunction with the Department of Transportation, formulate a six-year secondary improvement plan and a priority list for secondary improvement planning. Today's public hearing is being conducted for the fiscal year 2026 through fiscal year 2031 plan and the 2026 fiscal year budget. This year's budget follows the first year of the secondary six-year plan, which starts with fiscal year twenty-six. The total amount estimated for the plan at this time is a hundred and five thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars over the six years. In updating the six-year plan, we have all the priorities established by the board. Unpaid roads, so the current roads that are on the unpaid road plan, they have funding dedicated for fiscal year 2026. Roads must have at least fifty vehicles per day to qualify for the unpaid road program, and the estimates are set, buildings and this will be done are called a rural estate. Roads currently on that plan are Route 692 White Point Lane. This is the first priority set by the board, is that it has an estimate of fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars. The road will go to construction in summer calendar year 2025, so this summer. As always, any savings from these roads will be applied to future hard surface priorities set by the board and will continue to work with county staff and the board to identify future routes that qualify for the rural estate program and ensure they are prioritized through the secondary six-year plan using unpaid road dollars and telefees. I do want to mention that we have requested special counts for the following routes. Route 610 Old Garden Creek, Route 619 Capes Creek Lane, Route 644 Bandy Ridge Road, and Route 702 Honey Point Road. Those did not meet the current threshold of fifty vehicles per day, but we're hopeful that we can get those special counts and they will be eligible in future. And at this time, I will take any questions that the board may have.
Board members, do you have any questions for Mr. McKnight?
Hey, how you doing?
Good, sir.
Good to see you. It was good to see you tonight. I do have some concerns of the Bordenet Road. And the last torrential rain we had, I've got a couple projects coming down there. The yards are flooded because of the ditches down there. And if anybody we can get in there to help those people to keep from those yards from flooding, ditches in either state ditches, they desperately need to be cleaned and opened up. And I mean, one of them was backed all the way up to the first student or a home. So we can, you can imagine with that, and I know the water table was flooded, I got that. But what it's kind of doing with our septic fields and things that are out in that region is, is there any, any money there for us to be able to get something to that, to those people?
Sure, this is the roadside ditches?
Roadside ditches on both, if you go down Diggs Wolf, it's all the Diggs Wolf all the way back down to Bordenet. And I mean, and the water right there in that curve, before you get to Bordenet Road, if you're familiar with that road, you take that one curve right there, the water comes right across the road. And I mean, you know, so in that turn. But if there was any way we could get some type of ditching done down there to help those people out, and I'm quite sure they're probably having in the wet season some trouble with their septic, and that would go along the way to getting that water table down some if we get that water new. Okay, thank you, good sir.
Also, excuse me, I'm Ms. McKnight. I had spoken to you a little bit earlier about the wider shoulders on Route fourteen and one ninety-eight, and I saw you recently did repaving on the road from Hardee's down to Moon Post Office. And that's really nice, particularly given that bicyclists and people who walk will have a safer place, because these are the strips where you have the rubber strips. So a bike cannot get over it so far, so they have to ride in the lane if they're there. With these wider shoulders, some bikes can do that. And I'm just curious if you'll be doing that and looking at doing that in more places?
The shoulder stone as a, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, shoulder stones should be a part of those contracts. If it's, if there are any issues or locations, we can look at those specific outside of the resurfacing schedule. But as part of the resurfacing schedule, they should be.
So it will always be done as part of the resurfacing?
They should be, yes.
Only as an anon if you have the time and the capacity.
Through the contract, it's contractual. So they, you know, as long as you have shoulder there to put, shoulder stone, obviously, you know, there's certain roads where you just don't have any shoulder to put anything. But yes, as part of the contract, they should be putting something down.
Right, thank you.
Any other board members? Okay, Ms. Green, are there any written comments for this public hearing?
No, sir.
Okay, I'll read the procedures for the conduct for the public hearing. Speakers are limited to one opportunity of three minutes. Each speaker shall open his or her remarks by giving their name and mailing address for the public record. Speakers cannot assign time in whole or in part to other speakers. Board members may not interrupt any speaker for questions or clarifications. Speakers' remarks shall only be directed towards the topic of the public hearing. Materials submitted for review and for consideration by the board must be submitted to the clerk for entry into proceedings. I will now open the public hearing for V Doc's secondary six-year plan for fiscal years 2026 through 2031. Ms. Green, are there, Ms. Green, are there any speakers that have signed up?
Yes, sir.
Is there anyone who hasn't signed up that would like to speak? Okay, then if we don't have any speakers, I will close the public hearing. And board members, do you have any comments or discussion? If not, I'd like to take a request for approved Resolution twenty-five dash seventeen as presented. So moved?
Settle.
Any discussion? Ms. Green, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Bowen?
Aye.
Mr. Walls?
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Doss?
Aye.
Excuse me. Our next public hearing, item A B. Ms. Wilson, could you provide a background on this public hearing?
Sure, this public hearing is to solicit comments from citizens regarding the proposed gift of four nine eight Chirp Street in Matthews, Virginia, to the Matthews Volunteer Fire Department.
Board members, do you have any questions for Ms. Wilson?
I only have one general question here. This is all going through our county attorney, is just wanting to mention.
Yes, sir, it is.
I have a question.
Ms. Wilson?
As part of this, the, will there be a stipulation that when or if not that, if the fire department should ever cease to be involved, their fire department will not serve the meaning that that asset, stipulation that they would fall to the county?
That would be a question for the county attorney, she was the one who was drafting that deal, but I can request that she can, I mean, yeah, just a little change of course.
I don't believe, oh, Mr. Bowen, go ahead.
I would certainly be in favor of that, that doesn't restrict the fire department to use in any way. We're just saying that should the fire department sometime in the future cease to exist or not need the property for any reason, that the property reverts back to the county because it's been paid for by taxpayer funds. And county attorney called me today and discussed that with me, and I raised that issue with her, and she said the, it would not be necessary to amend the resolution, that we could simply put that in the deed.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bowen. We met with the leadership of the fire department several months ago. I made several months ago reference to this topic. And I believe, and they're here, so if you correct us if I'm incorrect, this was a topic of discussion reference to all of their fire stations in there. Unfortunately, something happened with them. And I believe, if memory serves me correctly, they were going to add something to their bylaws so that if something did disband, that it would revert back to the county. But we can talk with them about that at another point. I just wanted to, just to say that we've had these discussions with them already.
And another thing that this brings up, and we can probably deal with it at some point, but at some point soon, I think we need to be talking about plans for the old station. From a usage point of view, I figure it's going to be like three, four years, maybe less, two?
Two, two.
So we probably, two? Okay, so we should be looking at what the possibilities for this property over here. And I'm not sure how we want to go about that, maybe we haven't had an idea.
Yes, ma'am. Any further? Ms. Green, are there any written comments for this public hearing?
Yes, sir.
I'll read the same procedures as I did before. Speakers are limited to one opportunity of three minutes. Each speaker shall open his or her remarks by giving their name and mailing address for the public record. Speakers cannot assign time in whole or in part to other speakers. Board members may not interrupt any speaker for questions or clarification. Speakers' remarks shall only be directed towards the topics of the public hearing. Materials submitted for review and for consideration by the board must be submitted to the clerk for entry into the proceedings. I will now open the public hearing. Ms. Wilson, would you please read the proposed Resolution twenty-five dash eighteen?
Resolution twenty-five dash eighteen to authorize gift of land to the Matthews Volunteer Fire Department. Whereas a duly advertised public hearing was conducted by the Matthews County Board of Supervisors on May fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, and whereas the Matthews County Board of Supervisors, after having heard public comments, seeks to gift four nine eight Chirp Street to the Matthews Volunteer Fire Department. Now therefore be it resolved by the Matthews County Board of Supervisors at its regular monthly meeting on May fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, that four nine eight Chirp Street in Matthews County, tax map twenty-one A dash eighteen, shall be gifted by special warranty to the Matthews Volunteer Fire Department. And be it finally resolved that the chairman of the Matthews County Board of Supervisors is authorized to sign any and all documents and pay any and all costs associated with gifting of the aforementioned property to the Matthews Volunteer Fire Department.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Ms. Green, are there any speakers signed up?
No, sir.
Is there anybody that's not signed up that would like to speak? Okay, we will now close our public hearing. Board members, I'll take a motion to approve the Resolution twenty-five dash eighteen, or we can open it for discussion. So moved?
Settle.
Any discussion?
I'd like to say one thing, really, all the board members here. Thank y'all for your patience in all of this and working with the best fire department in the state. These people, these volunteers, what they do for this county is just incredible. And I'm glad to see that we're moving forward with something like this. And I think we're all more ready about it from this, so thank you guys, we certainly appreciate you.
Agreed completely, Mr. Chair. Ms. Green, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Bowen?
Aye.
Mr. Walls?
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Doss?
Aye.
Next, we have reports and requests of boards, departments, commissions, and agencies in Matthews County Department of Planning and zoning. Mr. Bobby Andrade? Did I say that right this time? I'm just going to say Bobby, no disrespect.
No, I haven't, I'm taking. Good evening, board members, how are you doing today?
Good evening, sir.
All right, just a few items from the planning commission meeting a few days ago. They had expanded their small house committee study to include the board supervisor's request for lot size reductions. They also discussed the county-owned parcel that's next to the high school, whether or not that can be subdivided, whether or not it can either be hooked up to a H R S D or whether or not it should be sold. They discussed the special events program that the board supervisors, I think, kind of initiated. And they think about to, they think about to you to ask for some guidance on as to which locations may be appropriate for this type of permit. They expressed some concerns about already deemed public spaces and how the county would manage event guests versus general public occupying the same location at the same time. And they also expressed some concerns of these, that this topic about liability insurance, whether or not the county had enough liability insurance for these public spaces. And speaking of words of the day, agriturism is another topic that's come to our attention in planning and zoning departments. We had a plan or two and then an application brought this to our attention. So I'm doing some research, going online and looking at the Virginia, Virginia code. Seems like agriturism is a large umbrella of activities that is allowed by, by rights. So I brought this to the attention of the planning commission and suggested we have a public hearing to alter or change our county code. And they came back to me and said we could give a little more information that's probably right. So I reached out to Ms. Wilson to, for additional information with respect to appropriate zoning district limitations, whether or not we want to limit it in certain districts or not, or open it wide open. There's two schools of thought as to which approach we should take. So if the county attorney involved, and maybe she points the right direction in respect to agriturism. There were no C U Ps in this, this meeting, and there will be no C U Ps in the next meeting. So we're going to skate into summer kind of smoothly. General, I just want to board that there's a meeting next Tuesday with the planning commission to decide the application for Mr. Peru. And the next day, Wednesday, there's a B C A to decide the application for variance to disrupt a twenty by twenty de-actualize within the R P A. And I drop the ball on this one, the solar farm text amendment application. We can get the add-on in time, so hopefully we'll bring that to public hearing next morning.
Thank you, Bobby. Board members, any questions for?
Mr. Andrade, did I hear you right in the first, your first opening argument was about fees on a public use of our, some of our facilities? The, is that right?
Well, it's something about the special events permit. It seems that this was brought to my attention and came to keep on the board supervisors. I guess last month, absolutely.
Yeah, I actually brought this to the board at the last meeting because there was some people that wanted to have a wedding on the beach. And we had talked about this about a year ago with market days and farmer's market. And at that time, we had talked about a special events permit, and it was just addressing public or our property, county-owned property. And so when I was doing research on special events permits for other localities, they have special event permits for all property, so private property as well. And I wanted clarification from the board because I didn't think that was the intent was to for have people who have private property and want to have a wedding that they have to come and get events for. I think it was meant just for publicly owned property.
Correct. And that's how it was presented to the local planning commission.
And was there suggested fees associated?
I think the fifty dollars came out, I don't know where that came from, but it was just arbitrary. There's nothing that's in stone and have much really charged you if we do this at all.
Well, I, you know, I'm not, I'm sure I'm not opposed to someone getting one of those for usage or having a permit to say that we'd ask if we can occupy. I don't think I'd be going along with any fee associated with it. Taxpayers already paying for it. So if they, you know, if they want to reserve it, there's no opposition to it. It's something the board might want to take a look at. Having a permit that would be approved by the board, you know, as a, as a basis. But thank you, I just wanted some clarification.
Any further questions for Mr. Andrade?
I'm ready. Bobby.
The discussion with the planning commission, I thought some very good points. They pointed out the difference between someone maybe wanting to have a birthday party at Fort Fun for the children. And then, you know, it's open to the public, so you really can't give them exclusive rights to park or maybe even part of the park, a building or something like that because it's all public property and presented as open to the public. But an example of where it might be more appropriate, for example, is if the county two years from now is titled to the fire station number one, and if we wanted, someone wants to rent that building for an event, and it's not generally open to the public, then that might be a more appropriate example. So we just have to sort of, if we're going to do this, we just have to think it through and see what other things appropriate and what's not appropriate.
I may could go along with some type of application fee for a building, but I agree with Mr. Jones, when it comes to county-owned property that the taxpayers afford, I don't, I don't think we need to be charging a piece or stuff like that. And honestly, down through the years, I've seen many birthday parties underneath the pavilion at Fort Fun, and I've never known it to be an issue. If it does, I guess they would need to address it, but at this point, I really don't see a need to address something like that.
So we asked for us to look, review this special permit application, see if we have any to recommend to change this to it.
So we. Yeah, I was, I was going, I was going to bring it back to the board template for an example, but when I started looking at other localities, they, it wasn't specific just for county-owned property. And I think to your point, you can't really have a permit for a wedding on the beach and not allow other people access to the beach.
Any further questions for Bobby?
I would suggest that we table this, I don't think this is an urgent matter that needs to be drawn to action.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
So our next is our unfinished business. Ms. Wilson, Resolution twenty-five dash sixteen?
Resolution twenty-five dash sixteen is for approving interim financing for the Methodist Financing District. You may recall that at the December nineteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting, Mary Lawrence presented this as the V R E interim financing, just to kind of help them because they're managing so many millions of dollars of grants. And they just, this is like the third backup plan. And it's just in case there, because there's a time period when grants are paid for and then when they're reimbursed, and this would just allow them to keep operations going. This is the same information, the same resolution that was presented in December. The board voted 5-0 in favor of this, and so now this is bringing back, and you'll remember Louie Lawrence said that he had been to all the other localities that are part of this, and he, everybody had, every other locality had unanimous votes in favor of it, and so now this is just putting all of the various counties and towns together.
So, just so I understand, we need to re-vote, even though we voted and approved it in December?
I think you don't need to re-vote, I think it's just for presentation so that we can sign. I don't think it has a vote on it. No, it's just to present it again.
Okay.
And then as a clarifying, and this is, of course, is if they needed the funds, they would have this money available to them. And of course, we would have a portion of it if it carried over for a period of time, but the locality that's getting the grant, whatever, would reimburse, so we shouldn't be liable for any funds, essentially.
Correct, and it's, if you see on page five, it has the breakdown, all of the counties have 14.29%, and the towns have 14.76%.
The way I understand this, just for clarity for, for our folks out there, the Middle Peninsula Planning Commission is, is a lot like the county, when they get involved and they receive these grant monies. Sometimes they have to fork out the cost upfront, and of course, with any grant, you weigh on reimbursement. And I fully understand that, that if the money didn't come in a timely fashion, and this money was, the money, they would be coming to us for operational costs, is the way that I understand it, it's for operational costs, and we'll make sure that we understand that, to make sure that they're funded until that money is reimbursed to them. Has the county attorney looked at this, this document?
That would be a question, I think.
I'll, I'll ask.
Stan Zanderson reviewed it, the county attorney was for this.
Right, but I'm talking about that, it'd be for the MP, PDC, Stan Zanderson did, I'm talking about the, our county attorney looking to you. I'm just, just curious, okay. Appreciate it, thank you.
Let me expand on that a little bit. That's not quite the way I understand it. Middle Peninsula Planning District Commission administers obtained grants, they just got one for the dredging at Hole-in-the-Wall for Matthews County. These dredging grants are multi-million dollar grants, they're just huge expenses. And David's right in talking about how the grant works. The county, Middle Peninsula Planning District in this case, has to pay for the work, and as the work's completed, either in stages or at the end, depending on how the grants set, set up, then the money comes back in. And if the Middle Peninsula Planning District has a lot of, for example, dredging projects, they may be, they may, they may run out of operating funds. So what this does, it allows the planning district to go out and get a loan. And the loan is backed by the assets of the planning district, plus assets of the grant, federal grants and state grants. And what this agreement says, should the planning district ever default on that revolving loan, then the county is obligated for 14.29% of that. The likelihood of the planning district defaulting is almost zero, because they are guaranteed under the grant to get the money from the federal or state government. They just might not get it in May, it might be December. So between May and December, they have to get this loan. And the only way they wouldn't be able to repay the loan is if in December, the federal government or the state government defaulted on the grant and said, we're not gonna pay you after all, you did all this work, we're not gonna pay you back. That's never happened, the likelihood of that happens is almost nil. So that's our liability, is if, if the planning district doesn't have enough assets to cover it, federal and state governments default, and now that revolving loan comes due, then Matthews County would be liable for 14.29%. But we get such a benefit from the planning district and from them managing these grants and loans, that without them, we couldn't do a lot of the things that we're hoping to do, and the planning district is getting ready, hopefully, to, to buy a dredge, so that we won't have to wait two or three or four or five years to get some of these dredging projects, Queens Creek, Davis Creek, completed. We won't have to hire contractors to, to dredge, we won't have to pay them to come and get set up, that's a huge expense, a huge part of the dredge, dredging cost. So if we have a dredge in our community already, Matthews, Middlesex, Foster, King William, the counties in the Middle Peninsula Planning District, that dredge can be scheduled in different localities, and that's one way they will save us a lot of money and allow us to get dredging done on a lot quicker basis. And for different localities, if you have a marina on the creek and it's, it's shoaled up, then that's affecting their liability, it's affecting the income that the county receives from the boat track. So this is part of economic development that the Middle Peninsula is helping us with, it's just another example of what they can do as a region of, of, I think, what is it, seven counties and three towns? And they can get funding from the state that we can't get as an individual county. So it's a very important organization to be a part of, and they do a lot for us, and that's what this agreement is, to help them smooth out their operations when they have these big dredging projects and other projects, and maybe you have a shortfall in money for energy supplies.
Any further, board members, if not, to take a motion to approve resolution 25-16? We do need to take a re-vote as presented.
I will wait except for the resolution that's presented.
Sir? Any discussion, board member? Mrs. Green, could you roll call vote, please?
Mr. Bowen.
Aye.
Mr. Wallace.
Aye.
Ms. Phillips.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Doss.
Aye. Ms. Wilson, next on the agenda is yours, the energy audit.
At the last board meeting, the board had indicated and approved that we would terminate the energy audit and not continue with the projects that Schneider had selected, and that instead we would give money directly to Mr. Tillage to manage some of those projects. Mr. Tillage and I had a meeting with Schneider Electric, and they had requested that rather than terminating the agreement, that we just delay it a year because that would give Tim time to get some of those projects completed, and then we could re-evaluate some of the other projects, like the larger projects, like the HVAC and stuff that we may not get completed in that year's time. And Abby is here, with Schneider, if you have any questions for her, but they have a considerable amount of money invested in the project, so they, they wanted to delay it a year. We proposed a year, and that would also give them time to interact with the school's consultants, that's RMM, that is looking at their consolidation. So I think Abby's here, if you want to ask her any questions, but what we're proposing is to delay the energy audit a year.
Good evening.
Good evening, nice to see you all.
Ms. Amy Allen, I have a question, but I do have a comment, and I appreciate you guys allowing us to postpone this for a year. Next year, we will be a whole lot, in a whole lot better place, I think, to make a decision on this, so thank you all for allowing us to do that.
Of course. Yeah, we understand, we have to make the decisions that are best for the county, and I know a long-term discussion has an alignment with the evaluation of the school, so I think this permit is a better opportunity to do things coinciding.
Mr. Paul?
I just wanted to comment and thank your company. Your company brought in experts and had a level of expertise to help evaluate and identify these issues that we don't have in the county. And, and that's exactly why we sought to try to find a company such as yours, and I was involved in some of the meetings, not all of the meetings, but I thought, I was very impressed with the information you brought and professionalism with which you all conduct the meetings, and I think your willingness to work with us extended a year, because no one in, no one expected to wait a year. And I want the public to understand, the projects that have been identified and the need that has been identified is still going to be addressed. What we're talking about is we're gonna give Tim Tillage an opportunity to address some of these projects, the ones that he thinks he can address first and most easily, and as we go through those projects, we'll evaluate if we need Snyder Electric to come back and do part of it or do others, but basically we're gonna give Tim Tillage first shot at it. It's very nice of Snyder to agree to that, thank you.
Of course, and we'll be working with the schools momentarily on the contract application, so trying to get some stuff, make ones in advance to get some additional money, hopefully for some savings, pretty important as well.
Ms. Wilson, do we need a vote to extend this a year?
No, I think just if you all agree to it.
I think we all agree. Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you for standing here. Ms. Wilson, the strategic work plan update.
All right, in your packet, you have a spreadsheet that I have developed, instead of going through that document, it was kind of cumbersome, so we're going through a spreadsheet, and this is just a first go at it, so if you have suggestions and changes and things that would make it easier to interpret, and I have put in the update from March, and then there's already some changes to the May, the May 25, and actually, the first item on there that is what we just talked about, it says complete an energy audit, and then I have put recommend paying out Snyder and give the funds to Tim Tillage to manage, we have just voted to delay that, so I will update that. And then the other change to this, go down to municipal water and sewer, that is under infrastructure, it's the one right above governance. So I, I had noted that two term engineers with qualifications, we had Dewberry, they do not have the capacity to do it, and VHB had not responded at the time, they have now responded, and Mr. Bowen and I met with them, and they're going to look at, we met with VHB and Bowen, Bowman, sorry, Bowman Engineering, they are one of the subcontractors for VHB, and so they're going to look at the planning grant with the Virginia Department of Health, which is a $45,000 grant. There's some question on whether we qualify for all of that because the 2022 report was based on a planning grant from the Virginia Department of Health, so we're not sure we'll qualify, but Bowman is going to work on developing a code for us to revise that 2022 plan and get it accepted by the Health Department, which will then give us the opportunity and access to more grants.
Any questions for Ms. Wilson? Okay, Ms. Wilson, next, 11A, is the Planning Commission Subcommittee.
I think that's Mr. Bowen, is that, here's Mr. Bowen?
It is, Planning Commission has formed a committee of James Need, Rob Riddle, and Ms. Myers, Riddle, and they are going to be looking at, sort of like a mini comprehensive plan, they're gonna be looking at, they're gonna be looking at zoning issues, and looking particularly maybe first at the property side of high school that had been purchased with the idea of the fire department, putting their station run there, that's no longer being used for the fire department, so board supervisors have been, I mean, expressed a consensus to, to sell that property, to find some good public use for it, and so this committee is going to look at that, and whether they think it would, and, and report back, whether they think it would be best used for residential, commercial, business park, some combination, we don't know, but the people on that committee have a lot of experience in real estate and real estate development, and this property is served by the Hampton Road Sanitation District, the sewer line, and so it does have potential, more so than other properties for development, whether it's residential or commercial, and we're looking at a municipal water system. And if we have a municipal water system planned, at least at this point, is that it would serve all, all schools as well as downtown district and coming out to the nursing home. So water, again, public water would be in the vicinity of that property, so that may make that property very desirable for development, and the county may be able to sell that property at a significant, for significant value, we, we don't know, but that's what we're looking into, and that's what they're doing. So at this time, also address the request for the planning commission about the HRSD?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. Some members of the board, the planning commission meeting, there was a, some discussion and suggestion that there be a new committee formed with two members from the planning commission, two members from the board of supervisors, and then allowing that committee to select individual citizens if they feel the need is there. The purpose of this committee is to meet with HRSD, Hampton Road Sanitary District, and find out how many sewer connections are available in Matthews County, and what areas of the county are they available, because that's vital for economic development, if we're gonna try to rezone certain properties, we have to know whether or not we can have a sewer hook up there. And whether it's, again, residential, commercial, it may be important, particularly if it's residential, particularly if you're talking about smaller homes where you might have townhouses or something like that. So, and, and they would also look at property up, wherever the sewer line is, the one excellent location is up there where the New Dollar General Market is. If we're ever gonna have an economic enterprise zone in the county, that may be some prime territory right there, because we already have sewer, and so they'll be looking at that and meeting with Hampton Road, so if they ask things presented to the board, and I make that in the form of a motion. So if they ask things presented to the board and make that in the form of a motion, and give a second and have some discussion.
You have a second?
Second.
We have a second. We have a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Bowen, I would volunteer to be on that committee. A couple of months ago, or actually started a year ago when Ms. Justice was talking about things, she was getting double charged. I would have to go back through my notes, but I do have two or three contacts with HRSD and also the local guy that is here. I'd be happy to serve on that committee.
I would as well.
I'll be an alternate if they need to. Well, I can, because it's kind of near and dear to my heart, but I understand, understand that you as well. I had an interview with sanitation sometime before, and I'd like to contribute to that.
I have no problem if Ms. Phillips would want to do it. I'll just pass along the three or four phone numbers I got, let her do it.
I suspect the meetings aren't, since we're meeting with HRSD, are going to be primarily during the work day. And I don't know, you know, if that affects anybody's ability to be on the committee or not. The committee may well go into next year, and that may be a factor to use on committee at this time in time. So those are just my observations.
Just some additional information that might be important for that committee, because I think one of the things I wanted to talk about was where the sewer lines were located and the properties that had access to it. One of the things that we were working on with Timmons and the Planning Department, updating our GIS, HRSD, we requested their shape logs so we can overlay their, all of their utilities over ours. Then all you have to do is pull up our GIS. We don't have it yet, but you just have to pull up our GIS, and it'll show you where their sewer lines are and which properties have access to.
So we have Mr. Jones and Ms. Phillips volunteering.
I understand that system very well, because I'm certified on it. So we're on a factory system here still. And there's some changes coming once Middlesex makes the connection coming across the way. And there's going to be some negotiations there when that time comes. So I believe Ms. Wilson and myself, I can't remember who was in the meeting about two years ago, we had a meeting with HRSD at my request to see about getting the line run over to Guinz Island and what would be the proposed cause. I'd like to re-engage that as well. So if there's going to be an upgrade up there on Route 3, and we can encompass, I know there is some rumblings about some grants that may be available out there. So I'd really like to get in to see if we can make something happen. Thank you.
One more thing for the public. One of the other huge issues this committee needs to address is what David just mentioned is the Middlesex County, I'm going to be writing a sewer line to cloister. And how does that affect the capacity that has been set aside for Matthews? If now they're picking up Middlesex County, is that going to limit the, and cut back on what had been set aside or expected to be used for Matthews County? So now's the time to address this. We need to get on top of it and speak up. Squeaky wheel gets the agrees, so. David and James, is that who we're talking about?
Tom, I'm wondering if you should be on the committee, since you seem to know this much right now.
I'm just on the Planning Commission as well. I'm happy for James and David. James, you've already been with HRSD.
When I meant it was with the operations, not the planning, that they need to be planning for, not the operations.
So would you like to be on the committee?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So we have a motion, if I understand correctly, in a second. And that would be for Mr. Jones and Ms. Phillips to be on this committee with the Planning Commission. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any input? Number 12 on our agenda is candidate administrative report.
Thank you. So the financials and the department reports are in your packet. I don't normally go through the financials, but I wanted to highlight a couple items if you want to follow along in your packet. The first is on page 33 of 76, and this is the revenue summary. And I just wanted to note that the real property taxes, we are, we're going to be over budget in that line item due to the four cent tax increase, because the four cent tax increase goes back to January. So we will be fine on that, will be over on that line item. But if you go down to the personal property tax, we are under budget by about $1 million right now. But if you look at the current amount, it was 344,000. So we have two months left, and if we get the same revenue, we'll be at about 700. So we might be under that by maybe 300,000. And the next one.
Just make sure I understand. Are you talking about 1102, no, I'm sorry, 11030 personal property taxes, and we're at 3.167? Is that what you're?
Yes.
Okay, well, I thought that the last numbers that we got from the Treasurer's Office, we were at 3.7 or 3.9 already.
I didn't get those numbers from there. This is just based on what we get from the Treasurer.
Well, if you recall, these are, the numbers were Mr. Jones grabbing from along. 3.7 when you and I met with Ms. Wilson, that's correct, in our office, and we just got those from Ms. Stewart at the Treasurer's Office. We may want to just check those numbers, because I believe we're going to be closer to the 4.2 that was anticipated.
Which is a good one.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, the next one is on the expenditures, page 35 of 76. So all of these, where it says the percent remaining, it should be at 16% or more. So if you scroll down, there is one, either 12210, the county attorney, is that 64%? That's because we have not got invoices for December or January, February, March, or April. So that's likely not even close to the 64%.
Can I say something there? Well, we know what the projected is because of what night is fixed. So we can expect that it's going to come in if you get away. And I know what you mean. I'm just saying, but we are going to get those bills sooner or later.
The problem is, is that in December halfway through the year, you changed it to a $350 per hour contract.
I understand that.
So what we were budgeting is not, it's going to be over that.
I understand what you're saying, but we anticipated that. So the bills did not come in, that's basically what's happening. But if they're staying, if those bills are staying within size of the confines, I believe it's 20 hours a month, is that correct?
I just don't recall. I believe that.
Okay, so we can pretty much expect that, especially if we haven't got any bills beforehand. We can expect them to stay at, at that rate, given with the increase because we did make that change.
Yeah, and the only problem with this is budgeting for FY '26, because we really have no idea where we're going to end up. So we kind of just guess for '26. All right, the next item is page 37, 76, the planning zoning. They're at 4.79%, and they should be at 16%. And that is because of the Berkeley Group, we had Matty here, and then we also were using her when we had hired two people. So there was some overages there. And the other item is the health care, because in the past, there was only one of the three that was on the health care, and now there's three of the three is on the health care and the family plan. So that is another reason for that being, so it's that it's going to be over budget in that department. And the next one is page 40 of 76. Mr. Dawson, you had asked a question about the Loda, the existing claim. That claim is for life, so it's not, so we pay, and that's for the husband and the wife. They're both home plan. And that happened before 2017, so that is paid out for life.
Okay, thank you.
The other item on the bottom of that page is the Spyglass Group, which you may not have seen before, it's $5,000. This was, we actually started this at the beginning of last year. It's kind of an audit, like the energy audit, but it's auditing our cell phones and our telephones to try to find savings. And they guarantee that the savings that they'll find will exceed the cost of that project. And then on page 41 of 76, oh, that's the same, the same thing we had, oh, that, the November invoice, it's a different amount because it was prorated. And I think Ms. R. prorated it because she was in Germany, so that's why the amount was different. That's all on the financial reports. Other than the EDOT, there was a, we made a payment to 77,000 to EDOT toward the sidewalk project. That was our matching portion of the engineering for the design of that project. Any questions on the financials?
Yes, ma'am. All of my questions come off of page 15. I look at it a little differently than y'all do. I'm not sure what page that is.
15 of the, you got it, of the financials.
Yes. So I see that we had a $62, $6,250 check for delineation at Haven Beach. Are we delineating for the parking lot? Is that what that is?
Yes.
Great, glad to hear that. And then also, on that same page, didn't quite understand the abbreviation for, second from the bottom, DJG for the new firehouse. If I understand it correctly, that says 35% conceptual design and feasibility. Is that, is that correct for the Boys and Girls Club and everything?
It's not for that property. It's for the one beside the high school, because we had done some surveying and somewhat delineation. So you will not see any other bills from DJG.
Okay, thank you for that answer, David.
Unless the fire department hires them, but we have not. We terminated that.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Any other questions on the financials? Next item is National Light Out 2025. The Sheriff's Department said, I'm just going to fill this out on your form. Has developed this really nice little flyer, and it says, "Call in all businesses, civic organizations, groups, and churches to sign up to sponsor a food item, a game, drinks, etc. Help us make this a free event for our entire community." So the National Light Out is going to be Tuesday, August 5, 2025, from 4:00 to 7:00 PM at the Matthews High School. And there's some information on here, who you can contact, and, well, we have this on our website, is it on your website? Okay, so it's on the Sheriff's website as well, so who you can contact to sign up. All right, the next item that I have is from the Municipal Clerks Honor Roll. Ms. Judy Green, Senior Executive Deputy Clerk of Matthews County, is named to the 2025 Municipal Clerks Honor Roll. This is the second time that Ms. Green has been nominated, and she was nominated by two different people. So the Municipal Clerks Honor Roll is a special recognition program from the General Code since 2001. It gives municipal officials, private citizens, and other colleagues the opportunity to acknowledge and pay tribute to the municipal clerks who give so much to their communities every day. The program originally ran from 2001 to 2010. Then in 2019, it was reintroduced to coincide with the 50th anniversary of the Municipal Clerks Week. So this is wonderful that she's recognized for all the hard work that she does for the county, so I'd like to give her a round of applause.
Congratulations, Ms. Green.
All right, the next item is QR code. Do you have these printed at the back? These are these at the back? And this is to sign up for our Everbridge Notification System. It'll take you through, you put your phone number and your contact information in there. And this is our, the system that we use when there's weather events or emergencies. It broadcasts out and notifies, if you put your cell phone number in there, it will notify you on your cell phone that there's weather or that there's an emergency somewhere. Any questions on that one? All right, the next item, the board had requested that I do a very high-level, very rough estimate for a proposed, a proposed remote grain field for 384 Old Ferry Road. And so I went through and I put in here the cost to replace the tanks that are out there, the force main to go over to a remote site that I estimated was about 5,000 linear feet, 5,500 linear feet from the tanks. So I had included in here costs for removing, demolishing and removing the existing tanks, bringing in new tanks, controls, pumps, and the force main to bring it over there. And the rough estimate was 583,000. So I also, yesterday, had a conversation with the Health Department on the permanent pumping hall. And my questions for the Health Department was how do we get, how do we, what do we need to do to get 384 Old Ferry Road on the permanent pumping hall? And they said there, it's going out for signature for the general permit with the Commissioner. Once she signs it, it comes back to the Health Department here, and then we have to submit a permit. And with that permit has to be design drawings prepared by an engineer with the controls, the alarms, and everything that's needed. And we did get an estimate from Wilson Engineering, and it was, they said it would be $16,000 to prepare, survey, and prepare those construction drawings. And then $1,600 for a TOPO survey. And then I estimated, using similar numbers to what I used for the remote grain field, that it would be about $52,000 to remove those tanks and put new ones in. And then controls, I estimated at $2,000. So it would be about $781,600 to get the drawings designed, to get it designed and constructed so that we could submit a permit to the Health Department for.
And the controls, I'm sorry, the controls are for the alarm system because they're embedded tanks.
Correct.
Right, okay, thanks.
Any questions?
So your total on design, I know you said 583, your total on design was what?
For the pumping permit pumping hall?
No, no.
583, 583,000.
That included the design that you were talking about with the tanks.
No other questions on that one? All right, and next, and then. Is expiring terms for boards and commissions. And this is, we really want to encourage citizens to apply for these boards and commissions. So I'm just going to go through the list and the date that they expire in 25. So we have a position on the Wetlands Board, that's August 31 of 2025. The day aging is September 30 of 2025. The Bay Aging is September 30th of 2025. The Library Board of Trustees, uh, 10/31/2025. I believe we have one position open right now, right? That needs to be, so we have a vacancy. And then we have a, a term that's expiring in October. Planning Commission, we have a term that's expiring December 31st, 2025. Board of Building Appeals, um, December 31st of 2025. The Electoral Board, December 31st, 2025. The Northern Neck Community Services Board, uh, 12/31/2025. And the Economic Development Authority, we have two vacancies now that we need those. We need applications for those. Any questions on those? And, um, Ms. Green, can you put that out like on the front of our webpage? Just the things that we're looking for so that the citizens can, and then they can, is there an application on, there's an application online and they can come into the office? Oh, and there's one at the back of the webpage. If you're interested in serving the community, um, we would love to have you. All right, um, the next update I have is on the water study. And actually, I already gave that update. Um, we talked about the strategic plan. Um, and I have two other items that I'm going to add. Sorry, I didn't have them before. One is a grant update. Um, Jason Hudgens has obtained two grants, one for $4,500 and one for $16,000. And this is to remove derelict vessels. Um, so it's a reimbursement, so, and this is the first time he filled out some grants and he was successful in both of them. So, he is to Jason for doing that. Uh, and the other one is, um, April, our resident grant writer. Um, now she has received the ceasefire grant. Um, it's a hundred thousand, $106,622. And it's a technology grant and that one has no matching funds to it, so.
Awesome.
Uh, and the last item I have is, um, the library. Um, we had, we received notification, or Miss Betty did, that we're getting more money from the state than we had anticipated. I hope $30,000 more from the state. But that money has to be spent for certain categories. And when we did the budget, we reduced some of those categories. And in order for them not to reduce our funding next year, we have to spend all the money. If we don't spend it all in the right categories, they'll take it next year. So before June 30th next year, we'll have to do an amendment to, um, to add that back into the library. And that's all the thing.
If we're members, any questions for Mrs. Wilson before we move on? Next, we have supervisors' reports. Um, I'll start, if all members don't mind, briefly. I believe this law enforcement week, which is this law enforcement week, which is a week that's near and dear to my heart. Um, I think we have a top-notch, outstanding sheriff's office. We have one of the best in the state. Um, and when you look at what they're doing with what they have, I think it's pretty remarkable. And I, for one, want to thank you for above my heart. Thank you. I think sometimes, um, we get fixated, in any county, this county and other counties, that we get fixated on taxes. And we get fixated on what we pay. And I, I think it's a good thing that we pay attention to it and I think it's a good thing that we be good stewards with our money. But I also think it's very important that we look everybody in this community out. Sheriff's Office, our firefighters, all of the volunteers, hundreds of volunteers in this county that put in their time. Um, I think that affects our tax rate sometimes. But in my mind, you get what you pay for. And I personally believe we are extremely blessed in this county. That's all the comments that I have tonight. And I should've started with you, Mr. Walls. I believe you're on the, with the Board Supervisor's comments first.
No, sir, that's fine. Um, I do have a couple things. The first is, and, and Ms. Green made everybody a copy of this. The first is from the Parks and Rec Department. And they had a cleanup day on Saturday, March 15th, over at the South Bay Haven, two acres that the county has. Uh, they are warning us to approve for Mr. Tillage to move forward. And this, I'll, I'll, I'll read this motion. Parks and Rec Advisory Commission recommends to the Board of Supervisors, plans for South Bay Haven Park should include a pier, a kayak launch, small fence along the east side of the property line, a pavilion place on the existing concrete pad, parking spots added to the north end with an outlet to the main road and a porta potty and trash cans. And that was, um, voted on on the 15th at that meeting and it was passed five oh. So I would put that in the form of a motion, but I would also add, not limited to just what, what they have there.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Phillips?
Do we have a estimate of the cost for this? I mean, it would be good to have.
I know Mr. Tillage has already started, uh, working on the pier, but no, I can't answer that question. It's a conception right now. As far as the pavilion goes out there, if they're using this same slab that's on site out there, that's not gonna require any, any type of a RPA situation because it's already there.
I have no problem with, with what they want to do. It's just I'm curious what we're signing up for, that's all. And it's not in the budget unless we can cover it for this year.
Mr. Tillage has it in his budget.
He does?
What he told me.
And the ongoing costs for, for the porta potty and trash cans, which should be.
Uh, there's, there's one, one more thing. I believe that, um, Mr. Walls had correctly, if I'm wrong, that they met with the residents down there and, um, I think that they're all pretty much in agreement, is that correct? It's one Mr. Koch told me because I raised that issue with him and he said they had discussed it with, he said everyone. I'm assuming that, I know when we first went down this road a couple years ago, we had a public hearing on it, there were people that were opposed to it, but it sounded like now people are, okay?
Oh, it's, it's one of the most beautiful pieces of land from property, um, in, in the area. And it's a gorgeous piece of property with mature trees. It's, what, it's closer to two acres or open.
Look, it's a little bit open.
Okay. And, um, it was a site of a house and a residence. And it flooded and beamed off the property and, and gave it to the county. So there's very limited uses. Can't put a new, can't put a house back on property. But it's public property and, and we can use it for public property. And I think we should. The caveat with that is we have, as a county, have to be good neighbors, good neighbors to the residents in this community. Because we are talking about changing a residential lot into a private residential lot into a public park. And you can just imagine if your house was next to that piece of property and for the last fifty years or more, it's been residential and all of a sudden it's now gonna be a park. Um, so I'm in favor of developing this as a park. But I want the county to be very good neighbors and keep a close eye on this property. We're talking about putting trash cans there. That doesn't mean the public's gonna use the trash cans. You can, you just know the different things that can happen. So I think it's incumbent and very important for the county to keep a close eye on this. And if we find that it's not being treated properly, that the curfew's not being followed, um, that people are there causing trouble for the neighborhood. You know, no one wants to have a bunch of young kids coming in there midnight, two o'clock in the morning, getting rowdy and leaving, uh, and making noise. And so it's up to us as a county to try to make sure that doesn't happen. And I'm not sure what law enforcement can do. I don't, I'm not sure, um, what can be done. But it's gonna be primarily up to the county at this point to monitor it and make sure that it's, we are being good to the neighbors, the residents are there. And, and if so, then everybody can have a wonderful, beautiful experience. But I want the county to be careful and us to keep a close eye on that piece of property and make sure it's being used the way we want it to be used.
Ms. Wilson, did you have something?
I, I just had a question, a clarification. So did Mr. Tillage think he had it in the FY25 budget or in his FY26 budget?
No, the FY26 budget coming July.
Coming out.
I hope I didn't misunderstand that, but we'll check with him.
I, I should publish it there.
Yeah.
So we have a motion in a second, any further discussion?
I was gonna suggest we might wanna check with Mr. Tillage right that if, and maybe vote on this answer. Let's see, so I watched his there.
Mr. Walls, is your motion?
Yeah, they just, uh, actually, Mr. Tillage had asked me to do it last month.
Oh.
And because we had a public hearing, it just wasn't the proper time. So I, I, I think we'll go ahead and at least vote on it.
Well, if you can figure out the money you're going to win. Yeah.
There's some timeline in the budget as to, for example, the pier. When, when would the pier be built, uh, or the pavilion? It doesn't say it has to be done in the next twelve months. It's just that's the plan and this is part of the county's adopting this plan is what we see going forward is how we'd like to see the park develop. This is the way I interpret this.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Uh, let's see, Mr. Chairman, I've got a couple more things here. Just to let the public know, um, the marker that got away, red number four that is gone from Bolin Wall, we don't have, yeah, the whole new wall. Milford Haven East, we don't have a clue where it's at. It could be out in the ocean now from, we know. But the, the new red Ford buoy and the ground tackle, Mr. Tillage has already ordered that and it's been paid for. When I talked to him yesterday about this stuff, he wasn't exactly sure on delivery, but we're hoping we'll have that in place by Memorial Day weekend. If not, it's gonna be a liability issue. Um, so this month, we have pumped the Bolin Wall LLC Septic System nine times for a total of seven, I'm sorry, last month, for a total of $7,147. Their portion is $5,360, which brings their yearly total from last June 1st to now to $47,780. And the last thing I have, Ms. Green, if you will check on this, please. And a citizen called me yesterday asking about next month's meeting. I know we changed it to the 18th because, uh, June 19th or the 19th, I think they called, um, is, is on our day. So apparently it's wrong on the county portal is what I was told. And that's all I have.
Ms. Phillips?
Okay, thank you. Um, I, a real quick one, I am, uh, on the ASAN for the Market Days Committee and they have asked, uh, if needed, they're not, I don't think they're really going to need it, but they just wanted to know if it would be possible if they need for parking, they use the property of, where the fire department was going to be, the property we discussed earlier. They would think if they should need it for parking, they can, they would take care of it in their ready bush hog or whatever. So I hope the board will agree to that, okay? Great. Um, I want to.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
I would say if that property is damp, you're not gonna be able to access it. Now, I see Chief out there shaking his head. So I don't think I have a problem with it, but if it's wet, we're gonna have to stop the heat.
I think, I think they will be aware. And I, I think it's unlikely they'll need it, but if they do, it's there, thank you. I want to, I will thank the Treasury Department and the Commissioner of Revenue's departments for getting the bills up so quickly. I think mine arrived today.
It arrived yesterday.
So we may not get many thanks on that issue, but I know it took a lot of work, so thanks. Um, one thing I noticed, I read my employee handbook getting ready for next month's meeting. Um, and I noticed we're supposed to set the mileage rate for the county, for this. So I don't know if you wanna bring that to our side, if it was included in the schedule. We usually, we just follow the state, you know, state business when it comes out, okay, that's right. And, um, I was also, I wanna comment to the Mayfair Committee and, um, what a great job they did. It was a wonderful event. And it's so nice to see our streets just bustling and it was great. And also on Tuesday night, the Matthews Land Conservancy had a wonderful event at Woodford. Um, and Matthews, I think it's maybe in the paper, but it certainly was on Facebook, but Matthews will probably be recognized as a hope location, um, for the Explorers Club. It has to do with exploring the Chesapeake Bay. It's a marvelous recognition and we're kudos in this water surrounding Matthews. So, uh, another good thing happening in our community. I think that's about all I have.
Mr. Bowden or Ms. Jones?
As everyone knows, we just concluded our, our budget analysis and budget season and that was a particularly difficult process. We looked at every place we could, uh, squeeze, squeeze the nickel. And accounting of our size, we have to realize that going forward, this is gonna be an ever-increasing problem. We have to supply the same services and buy the same equipment that our larger communities do, um, provide the same people with expertise, but we have less money to do it. And so we have to find ways. And we've talked, this board has talked many times about finding synergies of where we can save money. Uh, whether it's with the school system and the county. Uh, on, right now, we have, uh, Tim Tillage being the, uh, Facilities Manager for the county and also now for the school system. We've talked about how old our accounting system is at the county level and the school system. And they're two separate accounting systems and how it probably makes sense if we're gonna buy some new system in the future that we can look at getting one system that both the school and the county can use. And whether we look at the bus garage and, and that ever comes into consideration. But we are just gonna be forced as a small county to look at these different, uh, areas and topics as they come up. And so I had the opportunity recently to see a presentation by Chief Greg Hunter, who's the Fire Marshal for King and Queen County Department of Emergency Services. He's also the Regional Radio System Manager for the Middle Peninsula Northern Neck Regional Radio System, which Matthews County is a part. We just talked about how we're going to be, uh, getting that new system with the money. And what he's doing, he's gone to King and Queen County, Essex County and Millsix County. And they have agreed to, um, give him a, what's called a letter of interest, not a letter of intent to join, but a letter of interest. He is exploring, uh, different ways emergency services can combine services. Um, the most immediate way that he's looking at is a regional dispatch center where, uh, right now, each of these counties probably has nine or ten full-time dispatchers because the standards are that counties our size need to have at least nine. But if you combine four or five of the counties, he's saying. But if you combine four or five of the counties, he's saying that he could do it with 18, probably no more than 20 dispatchers. So that would mean a 50% savings to the county. That doesn't mean those people are going to lose their job, but, and so what he's doing is he's making this presentation, it takes an hour to go through the presentation, and then there's questions. And he's asking the different counties to, if they're interested, to give him a letter of interest. And all that means is they're willing to listen to what he wants, what he can put together. There's a million-dollar grant that has an application deadline of June 30, this, of next month, as a state grant. There's a $5 billion grant, multi-year grant, federal grant, that has a deadline in July and August. And what he would like to do is to come to Matthews County, make his presentation, and ask the board supervisors to give him a letter of interest, which does not obligate the county to pay any money, does not obligate the county to commit to anything, it's just simply, let's listen and see what he has in mind. And what the grant, the Virginia grant, would be used to hire a coordinator or someone who, who could go to all the counties and evaluate what their systems are, the number of employees they have, and try to put together a plan. And this plan that he's talking about has flexibility, the county wouldn't have to be all in, they could be, they have some dispatchers there and some dispatchers here. But the, the problem, and this can be expanded also to emergency services, to rescue squad workers, and right now, we're beginning to pay workers to be at the rescue squad, other jurisdictions are having to pay more money. And what happens in those jurisdictions is that when someone gets qualified and trained, a neighboring county may, might pay more money, and so they're jumping to this other county. And so you constantly have turnover. Under this plan, you would have an independent authority, maybe like the jail authority, where you have, each county appoints board members to an authority and they sit down as a board and run a regional jail. Counties get together and have water and sewer authorities, where they are independent agencies from the county, and the county appoints people. And so this authority, one possibility would be to hire the emergency service workers that each county is now hiring, and they would hire them at one rate, and that would help prevent turnover from one county to the other, because everybody in this group would have the same pay scale. So right now, he has King and Queen County, Essex County, and Millsix County, who have given him the letter of interest. King William County is interested, he's talking that it hopefully would be four to five counties, that he's hoping Matthews County would eventually join that group. This letter of interest doesn't require us to do anything other than just listen to the board. Letter of interest would be after he comes, so all I'm asking for, and I'm putting this in the form of a motion, is that we invite him here either at our June meeting or at a special meeting, and I'll leave that up to the pleasure of the board. And just keep in mind that when he comes, his presentation is an hour about, and then there'd be questions. So you may want to have a special meeting to that. And we could learn, and the public could learn what's involved, and this is simply a learning experience, it doesn't, we're not committing to anything. So I put that in the form of a motion.
Board members, we have a motion, we have a second.
I'm the second.
Yes, we have a motion and a second, and we have any discussion?
Yes, sir. I have a comment, and I'm not an emergency services dispatcher. I'm all about saving money, but from what I heard last month, from the sheriff and the other young lady, that wouldn't work for Matthews County. Again, I'm not an emergency services dispatcher, so I don't know any more about it than what I was told.
Before you make up your mind, I would suggest that you listen to this man. He is the manager of our radio system now, and we're just gathering information. We shouldn't make a decision, I don't think, until we have more information, and that's all he's here to do, is to give us information.
Go ahead.
If I can, correct me if I'm wrong, the sheriff and I spoke twice in reference to regional dispatch. This board can't decide to go that route without the sheriff's approval, because dispatch reports to the sheriff. And it's, and the sheriff, she's here tonight, and she and I have spoken twice in reference to this presentation, or to read to the regional dispatch. If she's not going to approve it, I don't see a need for a presentation. I think that there is a lot of, there's a lot to deal with, a regional dispatch or the regional jail, or, I know you mentioned that there could be a regional dispatch, and I believe you said if you still had the dispatch here, well, that won't work, because they were paying that much more, because you're still going to need two dispatches on it each time in dispatch, and you're still going to need what you have here and then. But I guess where I am, I'm at, is that until the sheriff says, I'm, I'm interested in pursuing this or hearing more about it, then unfortunately, I can be of favor.
Chair, I attended the, the Millsix County meeting where he spoke, and me, Mr. Hill, good evening, Mr. Hill, how you doing? Sitting, good to see you. And the only real thing that I gathered from it at that point in time was, where would this regional facility be located? And of course, I'm sure that there's funds associated with whatever county would be able to get that, but it was also brought to our attention that the county, the sheriff has the final say so on that, and their sheriff made clear on that. And I've already sat through it, so, I mean, for anyone that would want to sit through it, but Millsix County was making the pitch to have that regional facility there. I certainly, I'm not in the, in the, in their shoes, and certainly support all of your efforts, but if that is a sheriff's decision to make, I think we need to hear from the sheriff on her thoughts on entertaining something of this nature first before we move forward, because we've, Mr. Wallace and I have sat on this board, and we've gone through a lot of correction processes with the current radio system, and has been applied, and it's cost us an extreme amount of money just to get it to this point, and we're still not finished yet. I really, before we were entertaining a regional facility, we'd like to see that this radio system get in place, but I do have to agree that the sheriff is an integral part in this, and I've been heard from her, so, anyway, and I'd like to, so.
One of the things I'm thinking about is if Matthews, this million-dollar grant, I guess it's like a feasibility study for some person, hopefully an unbiased person who would come in and look at the demographics and geography of Matthews County, as it would relate to some of the things, because we know we're unique in that way, and that you do have to go around the elbow and get to your thumb, and that's one of the concerns is that the people understand that. But this thousand-dollar grant is just for the...
Million.
I mean, zeros, I'm sorry, zeros. The million-dollar grant is just to understand the feasibility, and it may be that it's not something that's feasible. And the other thing that I wonder if this million-dollar grant would cover is the projected cost of dispatch as we go forward, because I know that it's, it's, what, about, almost just under $900,000 a year for dispatch for Matthews County. And that's primarily salaries, but the technology is also a big part of it, and that's only going to grow, that's only going to increase every year. And so we, as a locality, have a challenge on how do we fund that increase in costs with this, with the million-dollar grant perhaps, be covering some of the projected costs of what they may be, and requirements, because we are required, I think, to have at least nine people, right?
You have to have two on all times.
Right. So, and for a locality under $19,000, it's not going to settle enough, yeah. So I know it's a growing thing, and I hate to pass up the million-dollar feasibility study that it would be hard of, you know, because I can understand that there's a lot of pushback and why it may not work, and I want to hear it.
I think one of the biggest concerns with this is, if there's five counties, and just using rough numbers, you have 50 personnel in five counties, you have 50 dispatchers in five counties. They're estimating that 16 dispatchers will run a regional facility. If that's the case, I know you're shaking your head no, and I don't think that that's possible, but that's what they're estimating. So that's, is that 34 people lose their job? She knows, and it takes, I know, from what I said earlier tonight, you know, we pay for what we get. We have an outstanding sheriff's office, we have an outstanding dispatch, and I don't think Mr. Bowen's recommendation is any dig on their performance or how good that they are, I think it has to do with cost savings and cost savings into the future. But I want the public to really understand that people lose their jobs when you go regional. If we have, I think, eight dispatchers here, I think, eight or 10, I mean?
We have nine.
Nine. Okay, so if you have nine, if they estimate 16, they start out with 16, at least half of those aren't going to get a job, if not 75% of them. And that's just the way I look at it, but I'm sorry, Mr. Bowen, I can't support that unless the sheriff puts me and says, I'm good, I want to hear more.
The gentleman, I asked him about that, and he does not see the loss of empowerment that you suggested. And all, to Janice's point, he, part of this, it would be a three- to five-year implementation, and in the process, he would meet with the sheriff, and he would talk to them and see if he can address their concerns. If this board doesn't adopt this today, then you're saying you don't even want, you're not even open-minded to hear someone else's opinion and what might, might work, and see if you can save some tax dollars by still providing excellent service. This costs the county nothing, it doesn't obligate the county to nothing, all it costs is an hour of our time to have him come through and talk. And I'm afraid, I feel sorry if you all are afraid to try to learn and disinformation, because that's what, that's the way I see it. I think we should always be open to ideas and suggestions. We know this is happening in other parts of the state, we know that York County and Jame City County, the Procosin have done this, we know that New Kent is looking at it, we know that other camps are looking at, and we know King William and Essex and Millsix have already agreed to look at it. And one thing that I suggest will happen, because he mentioned this, in order to keep the employees at the regional center, they're talking about giving a pay increase, maybe as much as a 20% pay increase. And if we're faced with having to compete against that higher pay increase, that's going to cost us a lot of money, and we're going to see a higher turnover. And you can't blame somebody from wanting to drive 20 more miles to get a significantly better paying job. So I'm just asking us to give this guy an invite, and let's hear what he has to say, and see if he can get this grant, and then he can meet with the sheriff, and it's a three-to-five-year implementation, and it'll come back to us, and the sheriff can decide whether it makes sense, it may, it might not make sense, but I, I don't want to shut the door without looking at it.
Mr. Bowen, I would disagree with you in that, I don't believe I'm being closed-minded at all, to be honest with you. I believe that this process, at least I'm familiar with it, I watched the video, I'm not, I know Mr. Hunter personally, I know he's extremely knowledgeable in what he does, but I also know the bottom line is the sheriff's the one that decides if this moves forward. And she and I have had two in-depth conversations, and she's, she's here, I don't want to speak for her, but she's adamantly opposed to this. And regardless of what Mr. Hunter says, unless a regional facility is built and every dispatcher from every locality that's a member is hired, somebody's going to lose their job. Many are going to lose their job. It's just like when a regional jail was built, and we had five members who were stationed at the regional jail that I ran, when that was established, many of the jailers from the sheriff's offices lost their jobs. Not many got jobs, but many also lost their jobs. It's just a, it's, it's a, it's an effect of a regional facility. I'm not saying a regional facility doesn't have an opportunity to save funds. I'm just saying that we can't move forward unless the sheriff says she's willing to move forward, dispatch reports to her. That, I personally don't think that that keeps me, makes me closed-minded, I'm just respecting what the sheriff has told me.
Did the Millsix sheriff was at the presentation, correct?
Yes.
And he was okay with seeking the grant?
Well, it was, it was more in tailed, and they were not only wanting to seek the grant, they wanted to get the facility in Millsix, because there's money there.
Well, that's, but that hasn't been decided.
Well, well...
I mean, I knew they were making the pitch.
Everybody sees a million dollars, but the problem is, is where does that million dollars go to, and what is it, problems does it actually solve?
Well, that's, you're coming here this study, that's just a, why not here? Same thing, you mean, why not somewhere else?
Listen, I've looked in our county admin and brought out several ways we could save money, and nobody wanted to hear that, so I'll just leave it at that.
Let me get there bonded. Board members, I, I think it's okay with the board members, unless anyone disagrees, I'd like the sheriff not to need me to speak aggressively to this.
Sheriff?
Good evening.
Good evening.
You know, if I had just been approached individually in my office and given the opportunity, you know, of course, he's selling you a big package, and he makes it look fiscally responsible on paper, but the one thing he's not telling you is that who's compromised is every person sitting in this room that has a vested interest in Matthews County. The services that would be offered to our citizens are going to decline in quality. Wherever that dispatch center sits is who gets priority treatment, and because that's where they're vested. They are not going to be vested in Matthews County. They are not going to know where the old Lakes Post Office was, they're not going to know where Station 3 is, they're not going to know because they're not familiar with our county. I was elected to run a sheriff's office, I was elected to run a 911 center over top of our dispatch supervisor. If I couldn't do this job, and if I can't sit before you today and tell you what works for our office over the past 17 years that I have served in that building, then I don't know who else can. So if you can't take my word for it, I'm not saying this is not a power grab... So if you can't take my word for it, I'm not saying this is not a power grab, it's not anything, but I know what works for our community in regards to public safety. So just to touch on things, promote, what's the dollar amount we've spent on the radio project, roughly? Jay?
About one point four million.
Okay, well, can you take the bulk of that check and go down to one of these toilets and flush it down the toilet? Because we didn't need all this equipment if we're going to consolidate. So that is one of the biggest points, that it's no sense in doing this unless you want to flush tax bill dollars that you've already spent. Then in 2021, we got a grant from VM to overhaul to move our dispatch center from one room to another room. We paid it, we put carpet, we put a special AC unit in there that protects all the hardware. We did all of these upgrades. It was approved by the command, the planning commission, Mr. Jones and Mr. Walls, you were on the board when the request was approved to extend the money, some of it was reimbursed under that grant. Why did we do that? Again, if we're going to waste that money, flush that down the toilet too. We, we developed that dispatch center, we sent our people to training so they can medical dispatch. We are offering even better services than what those consolidated centers do. You want to know why? Because we know our county and we know the people that are in it and they know their first responders. If somebody's dispatching to you from King and Queen or New Kent, do you think they know who the authority is? The answer's no. You lose all that personal connection and it will deprive public safety and emergency services in this county of what it currently is. Right now, Chairman, you even stated it, we have a superior, we are running it as best as we can with what we have. It will not be that. I can assure you, it will not be that. Right now, working on a funding opportunity for a nine one one software upgrade. And then here I am, why am I doing all this if, if we're going to talk about wasting all this stuff we've already expended? I feel like it's impeding on a job that I'm actively doing. I feel it's disrespectful that no one can ask me why are you saying no? That million dollars will benefit, if it's in King and Queen, it benefits that, they can take that because you lose all control over it. They can expend it on what they need. Instead, I'm doing things that focus on Matthews County and the services that we provide. But I feel like even proposing this without hearing me out is wasting the board member's time, it's wasting the citizens' time. It is not the best for this county. Consolidation is the worst option for Matthews County because the only reason they are hard pressed to sell you on it is to back you the bank accounts of the counties where that center will sit. That is all that it is and that is the selling point. Because you all will be paying money to that locality to have a regional dispatch center. So all they're looking at Matthews County for is a revenue source. Speaking from a former, or for a former dispatcher, P. Quince, downsides. She worked for a consolidated dispatch center out in Rocky Town. The way this works is when it's dispatched, if they're centralized someplace, they might hear everybody's traffic at once. So the dispatcher radios something and tells, say it's for Middlesex and Matthews. Middlesex, we need you to respond to Lover, or, or unit, whatever, we need you to respond to Lover's Lane. Guess what? There's a Lover's Lane in Matthews. So you might have Middlesex deputies going to Lover's Lane and Matthews deputies going to Lover's Lane. Because guess what? We have the same names. These are problems that consolidated centers run into. There is a delay in response times because you got to narrow down which location, which county it is. There's a difficulty in data analysis. You'll never be able to tell the comp board just how much business you do, which is where we get reimbursements from, because there's no breakdown amongst county. It's all going into the same center. Nine one calls that already bounce from other jurisdictions can cause even more confusion. The requirements to ensure more dispatchers are on duty at all times, leading to needing to purchase another location that will need to meet legal requirements and sizing adjustments. Required employees to relocate, causing financial and personal hardships on individuals who already work twelve hour shifts. Those with children, finding childcare, childcare services is hard enough for a local drive. When the phones go down and there's only one line for nine one one, tell me which county gets the priority? It's going to be the county where they're sitting. Water concerns, look at all water around us. You try to send out votes from multiple locations, it's just going to be confusing and cause a delay in response. Matthews no longer gets to prioritize its own citizens, it's just whichever caller comes first in all the communities. Receiving a nine one one call from someone at one AM who has dementia, believes they're having a life or death emergency, tells you they live across from the Old Lake post office, having a small town community, understanding we can get to that house. We cannot if they're unfamiliar with the area. Somebody in King and Queen doesn't know where that is. When you run a dispatch center with multiple jurisdictions operating out of it, it can create confusion and dispatch burnout. Many of them leave. And that's very evident because Laura over here has already tried to been recruited again to where she came from. Each area is hearing one, one another open radio, every unit feels they're placed on the back burner. You miss out on intimate knowledge of your residences and community members. And lastly, and most importantly, it's dangerous for our first responders, that is sheriff, fire and rescue, as well as for the community. And that is why I say no and I will never say yes. I don't care what they promise. I'm working on my own grants to try to fund upgrades, I'm doing the best I can, I've been successful. I have not been told no yet for a grant. If I do, it'll probably bruise my ego a little bit, but I am doing the best that I can do. But I will never say yes to me, but the one question I do want to ask you is, why does Greg Hunter never approach me and ask me? That's a little, that's a little, that should tell you all you need to know. And from what I understand, he serves in King and Queen, but King and Queen sheriff does not afford us either. So you've got to find some other people to call for it. That's all I have.
Thank you, Sheriff.
All right, so response time is everything to the community. And when there's a delay in response time, because we're in a regional facility that doesn't understand the area, someone could lose their life. We want to give them every chance to live. It's all about life. When I served in the military and in the early part of my career, I was in search and rescue before I wanted to go on enforcement side, it was about response time, okay? And we were using antiquated equipment back then too, but such you guys pretty much use the same thing. But it is about response time and knowing the lay of the land, okay? You have to get familiar with it. This regional facility, and I want to agree with the sheriff on this, to take away that I got from listening to Mr. Hunter and listening to Middlesex, they're pretty much, they made up their mind that that system was going to go with Middlesex, okay? If, if it was to happen, he's private industry, there's nothing wrong with making a buy for your business, okay? Or try to enhance business, but when you have, and I'm going to go to what the sheriff said. I am a little perplexed why he just didn't call you, come sit down and talk to you and get your opinion on it first. It could have saved me a lot of time. And I do believe that we owe the citizens with all the money that was spent on his current radio system to finish this thing before we decide to even look at anything else. Let's get this finished first. It's been going on for years, let's get this up and running, get it finished first. And then maybe if the sheriff or something is appealing and they want to put the regional center here in Matthews, okay? We could take a look at that as well, because that, you know, that may be a viable alternative. But I, I really think that we should, we just kind of get this project completed and then, then look at other options. Thank you.
Board members, do we have any further discussion? We have a motion in a second.
Let me just say, we want the House floor. Sheriff Feller, you know I'm a huge supporter of your school. We may disagree on this, but several years before Sheriff Barrett retired, you know I would encourage you to run for sheriff. You know, during the election, I supported you. I wrote letters to the editor supporting you because I thought you were the most qualified person. You've done a great job for this county. I do support you. And the, to answer the one question, one of the questions you had is why Mr. Hunter did not contact the sheriff, because I asked him that question, I asked him if he spoke to you. He said he was told that they needed to get the permission, this letter of intent from the supervisors for the grant, for the feasibility study. And that if the supervisors weren't agreeable to do a feasibility study, then it was on drop there. And that if the feasibility study was done, that's when he would contact the sheriffs and try to address their concerns. So.
I'll call this block on that.
Okay. I, I still support you, you're doing a great job, I appreciate everything you do in your department.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I have one more, one more thing. Ms. Wilson, some time ago, didn't you take a trip with the county administrator from Gloucester and look at a regional facility?
Yes, I did.
And what prompted that? You might be asking.
The county administrator reached out to me, said she wanted to show me the York, I mean, dispatch center.
For York County? I got you, I'm just, just curious, thank you.
If we have no further discussion, Mr. Green, you take a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Bowen?
So the motion is in favor of inviting him.
Correct.
Yes.
Mr. Walls?
Nay.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Nay.
Mr. Collins?
Nay.
Mr. Bowen, do you have any further supervising comments?
No.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah.
Yes, that will end our supervisory report. Oh, I apologize, one, one additional thing. Our emergency management department has moved out of their, a small building here in the courthouse parade and they're on the second floor of the administration room. So hopefully the wall will fall down after, end with that. They're doing a great job, Wilson. Okay, so next that we have are appointments. I'll, I'll apologize, opportunity for citizen comments, same rules will apply, guidelines will apply from earlier. If anybody has, would like to speak, you can come up here with your name and your address and you have three minutes.
My name is Laura Perez and I'm a communications manager for the shift, our nine one one center. I'd like to address you directly, Mr. Bowen, because you stated to the board that you wish for them to be open minded. However, you didn't take the time to get those thoughts before you wanted to push this opinion forward. I came from that consolidated center in York County. I'm here in Matthews for a reason.
May I need to address the whole board, not just one?
I understand.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. But I came from York County for a reason. I'm here in Matthews because the consolidated center doesn't work. They have four jurisdictions in that department and they have more turnover than any department I have ever seen. They lose dispatchers by the dozens, year after year. This past year, they had nineteen in training and they were not up to numbers. I go to the PSAP meetings, I know who has left. Our department was the only department fully staffed at the PSAP meeting and I was very proud of that. And we're talking with the entire seven five seven region. Please consider both sides before we make decisions like this. And I understand that the board needs to consider money, but with each consolidation that York County took on, half of that department was lost. I was one of the last senior dispatchers when I left and there's maybe five left after me. And they, they don't have any of their original members from their consolidated centers. When James City just merged with them, they lost half of their department because the dispatchers didn't even want to go. They don't know the county, they don't know the region, it becomes chaos. Sheriff loses all control of her policies, her procedures, everything. She loses all power and control over everything. Matthews County will have no control. Those policies become one, it becomes one center, everything is under one center. So if Middlesex is the head, that's who has the power, not Matthews. You will lose all control of your emergency services in nine one one. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, y'all know who I am. I'm a good man, Tom, Ryan Lewis, fire chief, I live at fifteen thirty thousand, Watford Hall Road. And kudos to Sheriff and Laura for your comments, thank you, Melody. But my comment is, at ten to the point, now through this border side point and through the many years as fire chief, it seems to put money in front of public safety. I'm tired of hearing about money. We have a unique situation in Matthews County with good people, qualified people, people dedicated to the citizens every day, twenty-four seven, seven days a week. I worked for, I worked for the same department, Laura, there for thirty-three years, I retired there. I understand how that works. We as Matthews County, a small population, would get to the bottom of the barrel. You think about it, we get hit with a hurricane, even tropical storm here, what we have to deal with and, and what we do on our own. We don't have the resources because the resources are divvied out to the bigger localities. If you don't think that's true, don't wish for a hurricane, let me tell you. But in regards to, to the process here, you know, I'm a little upset that, you know, as public safety, fire, sheriff, fire, rescue squad, we have a group, we've worked well together, we've been working with this radio system, how big of a problem that's been. But Greg Hunter has been absent most of the time. He hasn't been a friend of ours, he's hired yet as private manager or as system supervisor. It's like blowing tea. So I, I really don't understand where this came from, Mr. Bowen, I don't. You know, I thought we as public safety were clear about this. What we have is special and doesn't need to be changed. So please understand, I mean, I'm getting, there's a lot going on in this world, we have a lot going on in the fire service and public safety. We can't keep coming up and doing this. We need good communications. We just can't be hip of this in the last minute. And please stop, stop focusing on money. I understand we don't have much, but public safety is important. The folks who get out to respond to someone dying, but probably burned, is important. A regional system, it would probably get dispatched, but how fast? Again, if there's a road or a specific landmark that someone knows here in county, that's all we have to do to know where they're at, a regional center won't know that. And time, we took away and go, you know, cross the line for the incident. They're complete disaster. So please, let's be aware, let's be clear on this, what we have is working. Don't question that, what we have is one hundred percent working. So please, support the sheriff, support public safety, let's not be this anymore. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Scott Bergman. Scott Bergman, I'm president of the rescue squad, I live on one thousand. I wasn't prepared to come up here and talk, I was just coming up here to watch, but a few things kind of caught me off guard to talk about regionalizing the rescue squad and all that. Middlesex, her as an outside company to run theirs and they have extreme turnover. We have very little turnover because the people like working here, they're used to the roads, they're used to the community. We have a very good rescue squad, I'm very proud of it, it's probably one of the best ones. ones in the state. First, they have RSI capability. We run a lot of serious calls during this meeting alone, there were two calls. Wanted to ball field somebody hit with a bat, going unconscious, and five minutes after that, another one up in Coward Street. The reason I'm bringing that up is, you know, recently I had to use 911 myself and I was on my cellphone and it sends me off to some regional system. And they're asking me if I was in Florida, if I'm in the eastern shore, where I'm at. Finally, I hung up on them and I called Matthews myself. That is a cell system area that we can't really control. But I thought to myself, what if I was 90 years old and calling for help? Do I want to get somebody in King and Queen who's not going to understand where I'm calling from? We had to realize, we still have a large community here that is aging, that was here long before 911 addresses. We still get dispatched to places like past Mr. Hudson's house. Those are things, if you don't have common knowledge with the area and stuff, you don't know how to get around that. And these are all things that are being lost by that. The thing about lacking people's pay down to prevent them from going to other places is less than, that's a horrible statement. I don't think anybody here wants to go to a dead-end job where everybody, because it's all regionalized and locked down, has no room for growth. You want to lose people? You better go get your paramedic because that's a good way to do it. And you won't have anybody when you pick up the phone and call for 911. Our dispatchers do a great job. Recently, Dispatch Week, you know, they're, they work with us, the fire department works with us, sheriff's office work with us. We all, it takes a whole team to get this stuff done. And I can't stress enough how that would be affected by having to deal with somebody who's out of touch with what's going on. Early in this meeting, I heard talk about a place where I lived, Woods Island, about building a kayak ramp, a dock, a park, everything, and all that's great. Again, wants and needs. I want kayak ramps and parks. I want, I want all that too, just like everybody else. But if money is truly the issue, how can we be talking about parks and kayak ramps and cutting public service? Because when I pick up the phone, I don't want to get the park ranger when I, when my mother's in the floor. And if that's what this board wants, then that's fine. But I, I can't support something that's going to make something, makes it worse. And for Greg Hunter, he's always been 100% to me, but I was, I was, I'm one of the few that's left that was standing in the beginning of the radio decade. Because I, I think it's probably going on seven years now, maybe. I heard the hopes and dreams and promises that were promised and I watched them all drift away out of my control. I think it would run horribly. A lot of those players are no longer with us, but it was still a horribly run operation. But we still have the same people trying to sell us another boat, doing it before we've even got the one that sold us the first time. You know, beware what people come and making great promises about things and pay attention to what's going on. Thank y'all. I appreciate everything y'all do.
Sheriff Edwards, Matthews County Sheriff's Office. On a separate note, well, actually, I got to chime off with Scotty real quick. You can promise salaries all day long, but quality of life and working in a positive environment, you can't put a price tag on that. So they can promise 20% all day long, but here's two examples right here who took a pay cut for something that they felt was going to give them better quality of life in this profession. So you can put whatever price tag you want to, but not always are the people going to go. I wanted to touch on a couple topics just from the meeting. First, Major Graham just got confirmation tonight, July 1, we're bringing the inmates back. So inmates will be available. I'm going to focus on litter pickup. I wanted them to cut liberty square. I, from what I understand, they can't use the county equipment to cut liberty square. So I'm going to try to find other tasks to keep them busy. This is at a dollar a day. So it makes sense to utilize them, let them pay their debt back to society. I've got McVic that's going to fund for the litter pickup. I was thinking about using them for ditch cleanouts as well, so just kind of keep that back, like in the back of your mind, but I do not have the funding for cleaning out debris from the ditches. So that might be something, if the county is wanting that, we might have to look, I mean, like I said, it's a dollar a day, we're not doing it five days a week, but it's a dollar a day per inmate. So that is an option. Let's see. And the other thing, the South Bay Haven Park, that was brought up and Mr. Bowen, you mentioned about people living in the neighborhood. So I just wanted to suggest, again, I know Marie Walls has mentioned in some of our quarterly meetings about ordinances. All I would encourage you to do is just, we need a back, like something to back up if they're on county property after a certain time that gives us the meat to be able to enforce. So that would be my suggestion is if you're going to create these parks, same thing with our public beaches or our boat landings or whatever, if you don't want them down there tearing stuff up, give us the ordinance that gives us the meat to be able to enforce it. And that's just the only suggestion I really have in regards to that. Because right now, we don't really have much. So that's all.
Thank you, Sheriff. Ms. Russell?
Good evening. Ms. Russell, 2769, I just want to tag on something you started with the supervisor of the report. This week is National Police Week and it is not about our vertical living, police officers, it's about our following ones. This year, 165 names were added to the wall, 165 families either watched, came to a, a ceremony today or Wednesday and went and saw their loved ones hanging on the wall. So keep those families in the parks and places.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Anyone else? A people closed citizen comment? Next, we have appointments. Ms. Wilson?
Yeah, we actually, the library board, there was two vacancies. One of those applications has been withdrawn, so we, the library is looking to appoint Karen Derris to the library.
Board members, can I get a motion? So good. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, next on our agenda is closed meeting. Can I get a motion to your better closed meeting?
I have a motion to be. In very good, closed meeting discussed four topics that set forth in the agenda on preparation now. The first would be pursuant to section 2.2 dash 3711a3 for the discussion of the potential disposition of public property because discussion in open meetings would negatively affect the bargaining position, negotiating strategy of the public body regarding 384 Old Cherry Road. Second item is pursuant to section 2.2 dash 3711a8 for a consultation with the county attorney regarding two specific legal matters regarding requiring legal advice. The alliance contract, which is our IT provider, and a process for emergency procurement of additional IT services. The third item is pursuant to 2.2 dash 3711a1 for the discussion of performance of a specific appointee. And the final topic is pursuant to section 2.2 dash 3711a1 for the discussion or consideration of one appointment to the board of zoning appeals and one appointment to the economic development board.
I'm opposed. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? No, certainly not. Any discussion? Mr. Green, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Bowen?
Yes.
Mr. Walls?
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Goss?
Aye.